Bienvenidos a una reunión nacional con Ross Perot, candidato indiscutido para presidente. Buenas noches, soy Peter Jennings. Ciertamente es consistente con la edad que las reuniones de ciudad se llevan ahora en televisión. Nos bienvenimos esta noche a un hombre cuyo valor fue formado lejos de la cultura de la televisión. Pero un hombre que dijo que la televisión jugaría un papel crucial en el proceso de gobernar a la nación si él es elegido. Antes de esta noche dedicamos una hora a varios episodios de la carrera de el señor Perot, que en nuestra opinión nos ayudan a entender mejor quién es. Ha desarrollado algo de reputación por no pensar mucho en la prensa que le pregunta sobre su pasado, sugiriendo en otras ocasiones que nos impida tener acceso directo a los votantes. Bueno, esta noche es una oportunidad para interactuar con lo que esperamos que sea una representación amplia de sus socios ciudadanos que nos unirán en vivo a nuestra invitación en diez ciudades diferentes.
Desde ABC News. Esta es una reunión nacional de ciudad. ¿Quién es Ross Perot? De Los Ángeles, Seattle, Dallas, Little Rock, Ames, Iowa, Ypsilanti, Michigan, Miami, Washington DC, Boston, y reportando desde Nueva York, Peter Jennings.
Muchas de las personas que nos han acompañado de todo el país vienen con preguntas que han dicho a nuestros productores que quieren hacer. Ni el señor Perot ni yo sabemos qué son, lo que significa que eres mucho más preparado para esta noche que yo. Pero antes de nuestra hora de esta noche dijiste que podrías tomar un minuto o así al principio de este programa para responder a la hora que hicimos contigo en el primer momento, así que seré mi invitado.
Bueno, fue interesante. Creo que mi primer comentario es... Las cosas más importantes de mi vida no fueron incluidas. Y la cosa más importante de mi vida es mi familia. Me preguntaron hace años cuando me sentí exitosa. Mis hijos eran pequeños entonces y dije: "No me siento exitosa y no me sentiré exitosa hasta que mis hijos se vuelvan adultos, tengan una profunda preocupación por otras personas, sean buenos ciudadanos y estén dispuestos a traducir esa preocupación en acción." Todos los cinco hijos se han vuelto adultos ahora. Todos cinco son demasiado buenos para ser verdad. Me casé muy por encima de la cabeza, tengo la esposa más hermosa del mundo. Así que en este punto de mi vida estoy empezando a sentirme como un gran éxito. Así que diría que la mayoría de la gente estadounidense no pudo ver la parte más importante de mi vida. La segunda cosa donde he pasado la mayor parte de mi vida fue en construir una empresa de una organización de un hombre a una organización que tenía más de 45,000 empleados cuando la vendí a General Motors. Y eso es una gran y muy importante parte de mi vida. Así que esas dos cosas, solo un par de pequeñas cosas técnicas sobre el asunto de la MIA, los POWs en Laos, Vietnam y Cambodia. Esto fue presentado cuando era una persona con teorías de conspiración. Nunca he dicho que hubiera una conspiración. No hay un solo trozo en el que estoy reclamando conspiraciones. Yo doy cuenta de que dejamos a hombres atrás. En segundo lugar, había un afirmativo durante el programa de que había pagado a los soldados de fortuna para ir a misiones militares. Nunca he hecho eso en mi vida, incluyendo los momentos en los que en los niveles más altos del gobierno de Estados Unidos me pidieron que lo haga. La razón por la que no lo hice es porque sentí que no era apropiado y la relación de riesgo-recompensa era equivocada. Así que nunca me involucré en eso.
¿Podría pedir una clarificación? Nunca has dicho en público que la administración no perseguía el asunto POW-MIA de la manera que deseabas porque había una conspiración involucrada en la CIA y el tráfico de drogas en China.
No, nunca lo he dicho. Si vas a ver mi testimonio, ves todos los escritos de transcripciones de programas de televisión antiguos. Sabes, todos quieren perseguir ese ángulo. Yo simplemente dije: "Mira, eso no es el asunto. El asunto es: ¿Existe alguien que sigue vivo?" Ese es el único asunto. Ahora, déjame poner el registro recto en mis esfuerzos aquí. Trabajé en esto desde 1969 hasta 1973.
¿En qué, señor? Lo siento.
El asunto POW-MIA de 1969 a 1973. La vida entera de mi familia fue puesta en riesgo. Mi esposa y mis hijos me exigen que perseguirlo, aunque había contratos por toda nuestra familia. Los vietnamenses venían a Canadá y me pusieron un contrato. Cuando los hombres llegaron a casa, recibí el premio más alto del Departamento de Defensa, que dan a un civil. El premio más alto de la Legión Americana, el premio más alto del FAW. Y lo más importante, tengo unos libros de papel llenos de cartas de corazón de los hombres que eran prisioneros y libros de papel llenos de fotos que me enviaron cuando primero regresaron a sus familias. Ahora, esto está siendo recaído ahora porque millones de estadounidenses están haciendo firmas de petición para tratar de ponerme en el voto.
¿Todavía crees que hay hombres vivos en alguna parte de China?
Sé que dejamos a hombres en Laos. La pregunta es: ¿Existe un hombre vivo? Con alguien que haya estado en las fuerzas armadas, siempre que uno esté vivo, el principio es el mismo. Uno, diez, cincuenta o cien. Durante años, la evidencia mostró que los rusos tomaron a la gente. Ahora los rusos admiten que tomaron a la gente, ¿ves? Aquí es donde comienza toda la historia.
Si se convierte en presidente, señor Perot, ¿qué hará con eso? ¿送árselo a equipos para buscarlos?
No he terminado de hablar sobre tu programa. ¿Puedo terminar?
Sí, señor.
Entonces estaré feliz de responder a tu pregunta.
Disculpe.
No hay problema. Ahora, para ayudar a poner esto todo en perspectiva, tal vez simplemente lo ponga en la cama. Desde toda la reorientación en esto, una de las cosas del programa, dijeron que ofrecía cuatro millones de dólares. Luego, en otro momento, dijeron que ofrecía un millón de dólares. Nunca he ofrecido nada en ningún momento. El gobierno me llama, típicamente en medio de la noche, típicamente un oficial muy senior con algún problema, como General Dozier, hostages en Beirut, o lo que sea. Y estoy feliz de responder si puedo. Lo limpio en el extremo superior antes de hacerlo.
¿Qué es el extremo superior?
Bueno, vamos a tomar la oferta de cuatro millones de dólares, que no fue una oferta. Fue una llamada del vicepresidente Bush. Una llamada del vicepresidente Bush, seguida inmediatamente de una llamada de un general en el Departamento de Defensa dándome los detalles. Ahora, así es como comienzan estas cosas, así es como continúan estas cosas. Ahora, déjame intentar poner todo esto juntos y darle forma y vamos a pasar al resto de los asuntos. Esta es una entrevista grabada entre George Bush y Murphy Martin, uno de los viejos correspondientes de ABC News y asociados. Está grabada y esto da forma de su punto de vista de mis esfuerzos antes de que la petición comenzara, comenzando en términos de las MIA y POWs.
Disculpe, señor, lo siento. Clarificación. ¿Qué está grabado entre el vicepresidente y Murphy Martin?
Voy a leerlo.
Disculpe.
Está bien. "Dedicado y principado" fueron las dos palabras que usaría para describir Perot. Cuando se involucró en los esfuerzos POW, fue como perolista y no me sorprendió. Fue adhersivo a un principio. Fue una dedicación despiadada al país. Seguía sintiendo un sentido de respeto por su dedicación a lo que estaba tratando de hacer. No hay muchas personas que gastan su propio tesoro por principio, y Perot hace esto. Luego, Murphy dijo: "¿Tiene una debilidad?" Y el vicepresidente Bush, ahora el presidente Bush dijo: "Realmente creo que es tan honesto e abiertamente complicado en términos de patriotismo que podría ser menos efectivo por esa razón." Para mí es un activo, no una responsabilidad. Ahora, así fue antes de que comenzara. Las personas de todo el país comenzaron a firmar peticiones. Me importa a estas personas. Un último punto. Estoy muy afortunado. Pude hacer negocios en cualquier lugar del mundo. El último lugar en el mundo en el que querría hacer negocios es Vietnam. Envíanan una carta sin solicitarme si me consideraría hacer negocios allí. Nunca respondí a eso. Dije a la persona que lo sacó no responder a él y no volver a hablar con él de nuevo. Y así fue. Ahora, en el aeropuerto de Alliance... Esa fue la primera parte del programa. Vamos a las bases en eso.
¿Podría preguntarte sobre la Vietnam? Un representante tuyo, el señor McKeelip, creo, fue...
Sí.
...hizo numerosas visitas al norte de Vietnam.
A su solicitud.
¿Qué estaba haciendo?
Él respondía a su solicitud de regresar. Él entraba, escuchaba y volvía a casa y decía que no había pasado nada.
¿Esto tenía que ver con negocios o con POWs?
Nada que ver con negocios, Peter. No tengo interés en hacer negocios en Vietnam. Solo lo dije, ¿verdad? Nunca he hecho eso. Ahora, cualquier vez que estoy en la habitación con un líder del tercer mundo, incluyendo a los rusos, todo lo que quieren hablar es cómo creas una sociedad capitalista. Y eso es, ya sabes, tienen un capitalista en la habitación. Y en una ocasión tuve una conversación muy colorida en Nueva York con uno de sus personas mayores y dije: "Mira, necesitas mirar hacia alrededor para ver qué necesitan tus personas." Por ejemplo, todas tus personas conducen bicicletas, pero no fabricas bicicletas. Así que tal vez deberías empezar a fabricar bicicletas en lugar de comprar bicicletas de otros países. Teníamos visitas así. Déjame ir a Alliance por un minuto y luego haremos lo que quieras. Pero me gustaría poner el registro recto. Somos dueños de esta tierra. Yo no paso ningún tiempo en esta tierra. Este es un pequeño trozo de mis ingresos comerciales. Es como un grano de sandía. Un día, mi hijo entró y dijo: "El gobierno federal quiere saber si les daremos tierra para un aeropuerto." Dije: "Ross, eso suena como una mala idea para mí. Los aviones hacen ruido. Ese es el contribución del viejo hombre a esta cosa." Vuelve en unas pocas semanas, en unas pocas semanas y dice: "¿Y si fuera un aeropuerto industrial?" Dije: "Bueno, ¿cuál es un aeropuerto industrial?" Y él dice: "Ningún avión de pasajeros, solo aviones que vuelan de todo el mundo, fábricas que alinean los lados de la autopista, partes transformadas en productos terminados y luego esos productos terminados siendo distribuidos por todo el país a través del aire, por rail y por camión."
¿Los puntos están?
Y dije: "Ross, ¿existe tal aeropuerto?" Y él dijo: "No, es una idea." Bueno, para resumir la historia, desde el día uno... Ahora, mantente en cuenta, si... Ves, me gusta esto. Ahora, la gente estadounidense puede no gustarlo, pero necesitas entender... Me encanta ver que las cosas sucedan. En el momento en que la ciudad de Fort Worth, el gobierno federal, comenzó a hacer esto hasta el momento en que el primer avión aterrizó fueron tres años. Normalmente toma más de diez años crear un aeropuerto.
Que dijimos.
Es el aeropuerto más grande, construido desde el DFW, comenzó y terminó en tres años, justo así. Ahora, el gobierno federal, escucha esto, tiene 50 millones de dólares en él y ya ha recogido 80 millones de dólares en impuestos. Ahora, si todo en Washington funcionara de esa manera, habríamos sido el negro, no el rojo. Están obteniendo 9,6 millones de dólares en impuestos al Tesoro de Estados Unidos cada año ahora, aunque están a 30 millones de dólares por encima y eso seguirá continuando. Ahora, le dimos la tierra y estoy seguro de que la gente está diciendo: "¿Recibiste una reducción de impuestos?" No, no recibimos una reducción de impuestos. Somos dueños de tierras alrededor y eso habría sido nuestro beneficio a lo largo del tiempo. El 83% del dinero se invirtió en los aeropuertos y el sector privado en 1992. Este aeropuerto es nuevo. Hemos tenido 5,750 trabajos de construcción, 2,000 trabajos permanentes. Cuando el aeropuerto está completamente desarrollado, cuando está completamente desarrollado, tendrás 54,000 trabajos de construcción que se han trabajado alrededor del aeropuerto y habrá 175,000 trabajos permanentes.
¿Es cierto, señor?
Así es como reindustrializas a América, amigos.
Señor Perot, ¿es cierto, como reportamos, que la administración de Bush está tratando de bloquear la expansión del aeropuerto porque ahora estás corriendo para el presidente?
Bueno, ve, me encantan estos tipos. En primer lugar, tienen una idea caliente como esta. Luego, van a un club de almuerzo privado y afirman sobre ello abiertamente. Luego, la mitad de la gente que afirman sobre ello abiertamente me llama y dice: "Ross, ellos solo dijeron que iban a pegar el aeropuerto alrededor de tu cuello." Yo digo: "No es mi aeropuerto, es el aeropuerto de mi hijo." Ahora, por cierto, espectadores, ese "él, él, él" que se refería a en el programa es Ross Perot Jr. Nunca me hablé, nunca fui a Washington, nunca participé en reuniones de la ciudad, etc. Es su proyecto, ha hecho un trabajo brillante. Está bien.
En caso de que alguien haya perdido la hora, la ex mera de Fort Worth dijo que el "él" era tú, pero siga adelante.
Espera un momento. Él no dijo que él era yo en el aire, ¿verdad?
Sí, lo hizo. Cuando se refería a Ross entrando a hablarme a Bush.
Bueno, ¿cuál es el nombre de mi hijo?
Tu hijo también es Ross, pero él se refería a ti.
Nunca he ido a Fort Worth a hablarme. Resto mi caso. Llama al maestro mañana, ve por ello.
De hecho, sí.
Ahora, está bien. Llama al maestro. Todos ustedes llamen al maestro, le encantaría.
¿Estás listo para tomar preguntas de la audiencia?
Bueno, déjame terminar en Alliance aquí. Te preguntaste sobre... Así que afirman que lo harán, que van a pegarlo alrededor de mi cuello. Les tomó dos semanas hacerlo, luego lo pegaron alrededor del cuello de Ross. Pero, ves, no crea un problema para nosotros. Pero les gustaría tener apoyo político en Texas y han hecho que todos en Dallas y Fort Worth se molesten porque este fue un tremendo motor para crear trabajos que ellos se detuvieron para fines políticos. Pero ese es el sistema, así es. Todo lo que hicieron fue dañar la economía y esto es política y trucos sucios a la costa de la gente estadounidense. Así que eso es lo que ha pasado hasta ahora. Ahora, ¿por qué no vamos a lo que quieren hablar? Esas dos cosas son muy importantes para mí y pueden haber otras cosas que la audiencia quiere hablar que aparecieron en el programa o lo que sea que quieras hablar.
Como dije, señor, ni tú ni yo...
Estoy aquí para divertirme.
Ni tú ni yo conocemos las preguntas. Vamos a Boston, Massachusetts. Si sientes que es importante identificar a ti mismo, por favor.
Hola, soy Kelly Curry y soy parte de una generación que siempre tuvo el derecho a elegir aborto. Pero mientras la Corte Suprema continúa apegarse a las restricciones pesadas como las de esta decisión de esta mañana, las mujeres estadounidenses están perdiendo ese derecho. Como presidente pro-elección, ¿cuáles pasos específicos tomarás para proteger el acceso a la aborto? ¿Signarás la Ley de la libertad de elección y levantar la regla de la GAG?
Bueno, claramente estoy en el registro de que es la elección de la mujer. Y en términos del mazo detallado que tenemos que pasar para resolverlo, tendré que pasar cuidadosamente por ese campo de pensamiento y ese campo de pensamiento se ha vuelto más complicado hoy, ¿verdad? He estado en el aire todo el día, así que...
Sí, señor, tienes razón.
No he leído los detalles de la decisión. Pero el punto es que es la mujer, debería ser la elección de la mujer. Siento muy fuerte sobre la responsabilidad individual, siento muy fuertemente sobre la importancia y la preciosidad de la vida humana. Siento muy fuertemente que es pensar y razonar en los seres humanos. No deberíamos crear una vida que no queramos. Pero habiendo dicho todo eso, el punto final es que es la elección de la mujer.
Está bien. Gracias, señor Perot. Y gracias, Boston. Volveremos para continuar las preguntas justo después de esto.
Desde ABC News. Esta reunión nacional de ciudad. ¿Quién es Ross Perot? Traída por Ford y su Ford dealer. Pregúntale a cualquiera que haya conducido una Ford últimamente. Pregúntales sobre la calidad. Es una de las principales razones por las que cinco de los diez automóviles y camiones más vendidos en América son Ford's. La pickup F serie, Taurus, Explorer, Escort y Ranger. Cinco de los diez mejores de los países. Es la calidad que breeding un éxito. ¿Ha conducido una Ford últimamente? Es más que solo una pregunta, es una respuesta.
¿Cómo se siente el viento frío?
Como el mundo es fresco y nuevo.
¿Cómo se siente el viento frío?
Realmente fresco y limpio.
Introduciendo Freshness Spring Rain, la fragancia más nueva de Massengill. La dulce scentada cristalina que desinfecta completamente el olor.
Confía en Massengill para que te sientas tan fresco y limpio.
Nueva Freshness Spring Rain de la palabra que confías, Massengill. ¿Quién más?
¿Otra nueva camioneta? ¿El astero se llenará de tu vieja?
No, obtengo una nueva camioneta cada dos años.
Nueva flare de Ford. Es como una camioneta deportiva.
Sí, con una tránsfera realmente grande.
¿Cómo obtienes una nueva camioneta cada dos años?
Al revisar el plan, donde puedes conducir nueva cada dos años. Además, estás cubierto por una garantía de bumper a bumper de 36,000 millas. Pregúntese sobre el plan, donde la calidad es estándar. Usted es el Ford dealer central de Kentucky.
Así que puedes obtener una nueva camioneta cada dos años o puedes obtener nuevas ruedas.
¿Has probado los singles de café Folgers?
¿Un café?
En su propio filtro.
Sensación singular, cada copa que bebes.
Es como hacer cebolla en una botella. Una copa a la vez.
Sensación singular, mañana fresco y cebolla.
Hay caldo en esto.
En su propio filtro.
Folgers, sensación singular, solo por uno.
Folgers Coffee Singles, una manera sensacional de despertar. Un programa de apoyo para los padres que no pagan el apoyo infantil está ayudándoles a hacer su parte justa. Mira a Peter Jennings en la World News Tonight mañana.
Esta reunión nacional de ABC News. ¿Quién es Ross Perot? Continúa una vez más desde Studio 1 de Nueva York, Peter Jennings.
Como hemos dicho, las personas con nosotros de Nueva York y nueve otras ciudades de todo el país tienen una pregunta aquí en Nueva York. Sí, señor.
Es de Larry Goldberg. Estoy con el Unión de Autores de Taxi en Nueva York. Cuando Jesse Jackson estaba corriendo para el presidente, fue descartado por mucha gente porque no estaba calificado porque nunca ha tenido ningún cargo electoral. Algunas personas dijeron que la presidencia no es una posición de entrada. Other than the fact that you're white and have about three and a half billion dollars, why are you more qualified than Jesse Jackson or anybody else to be president?
No afirmo que lo soy. No, eso depende de la gente. Todo este proceso comenzó en el nivel de las raíces. En este punto, millones de personas en todo el país y en todos los 50 estados están poniéndome en el voto. Por razones mejor entendidas por ellos, ellos piensan que lo soy. Luego, en noviembre, el pueblo americano decidirá.
Pero seguramente piensas que eres calificado.
No voy a sentarme aquí y presumir de mí mismo. Dejo que el pueblo americano decida. He pasado mi vida construyendo empresas y creando trabajos y una gran parte de cada día de mi vida va a ayudar a otras personas hasta que me metí en esto. Y... Entonces, la gente tendrá que decidir.
Está bien.
Y eso depende de la... Ves, eso es lo que me encanta del sistema. Esto viene del pueblo americano. Están haciendo esto porque están enfermos y cansados de un gobierno en un bloque que no funciona.
Vamos a Seattle.
No puedo terminar mi frase. Seguid.
Sí, señor Perot. Mi nombre es Jeff Cass. Soy un reportero en KJR Sports Radio. La mayor historia deportiva de Seattle este año ha sido un grupo de inversores japoneses que se han involucrado con estos marinos de Seattle, la compra de ellos. ¿Qué piensas de una de las instituciones más grandes de América cuando los inversores extranjeros se involucran? Dices que te gusta ver que las cosas funcionen. ¿Es esto una solución creativa en una economía global? ¿O es esto, es esto algo de tragedia? ¿Es esto Estados Unidos no siendo capaz de apoyar una de sus instituciones más grandes?
Así que otro gran indicador de que estamos perdiendo en la competencia internacional. Takes mucho dinero para comprar un equipo deportivo. He tenido muchas personas decentes que me han dicho: "Mira, Ross, los grandes bancos del mundo solían estar en nuestro país." Ahora, nuestro mayor banco es 21st, la última vez que revisé. Y si alguna vez tomas los préstamos del tercer mundo, nunca se pagarán, es insólito. Y todos los grandes bancos están en Japón y Alemania. ¿Qué pasó? Y yo digo: "Es muy simple. Hicieron cosas mejores que nosotros. Compramos sus cosas con nuestro dinero. Tienen lo que solía ser nuestro dinero en sus bancos. Ahora están comprando Radio City, sus equipos deportivos, Pebble Beach, etc., etc., etc." Es muy importante que regresemos al juego. Tal vez esto ayudará a responder a tu pregunta. Tenemos que reconstruir y reindustrializar a América. Sabes, amigos que han estado ahí gastando dinero por 20 a 25 años nos han puesto en esto. Tal vez la gente estadounidense siente que necesitamos que alguien venga aquí que va a poner a América de vuelta a trabajar. Así que tenemos que comenzar a competir y ganar internacionalmente. No deberíamos estar enfadados con los japoneses. Los vencimos. Los vencimos. Deberíamos hacer mejores productos que ellos hacen. En deportes, si te vencen, no te enfades. Puedes verse un poco enojado, ¿verdad? Pero te aseguras de que ganas el sábado siguiente.
Seguid, señor Cass.
Sí, señor Perot, pero dices que te gusta ver que las cosas funcionen. Para las personas aquí en Seattle, la equipo de béisbol ahora está trabajando, no está saliendo. Así que, ¿cómo puede que esto sea malo?
No dije que fuera malo. Pensé que estabas preocupado por ello.
Bueno, estoy preocupado por saber qué piensas.
Los japoneses fueron capaces de comprar su equipo de béisbol y los estadounidenses no fueron capaces de comprar ese equipo de béisbol porque han estado competiendo y ganando y vendiéndosles automóviles y estereos y grabadoras de tape y así sucesivamente que solíamos ser el creador del mundo. Ahora, ellos tienen lo que solía ser nuestro dinero, vuelven aquí y compran nuestras cosas y nos molestan. Estoy tratando de explicar cómo pueden hacerlo. Estoy tratando de explicar lo que tenemos que hacer para que todavía podamos tener el motor económico más poderoso del mundo que permite a nuestra gente tener un alto nivel de vida. Déjame darle forma y te diré. ¿Sabes que en Japón no tienen suficientes trabajadores? Ahora, espero que vea eso antes de apagar las luces. En este país, no tenemos suficientes personas para hacer el trabajo. ¿No sería genial? Ves, tenemos que competir y ganar. ¿Estudias deportes? Es muy importante ganar, ¿verdad?
Absolutamente.
Todo el mundo entiende eso en deportes, nadie lo entiende en negocios. Y aún así, si miras los números, los resultados están ahí, la tarjeta de juego está mal.
Washington DC.
Señor Perot, soy el reverendo Kirk Monroe. Quiero saber, ¿qué consideras sagrado y es el privacidad sagrado para ti?
Sí, el privacidad es absolutamente sagrada, los derechos del individuo son sagrados. Considero los derechos humanos sagrados. Considero la Constitución sagrada, pero es dinámica, no es estática. Tú y yo podemos modificar y mejorar si las cosas cambian y necesitamos. Nuestros fundadores hicieron esa provisión. Considero a cada ser humano absolutamente especial y precioso. Y dices: "¿Y qué pasa con este pequeño niño que nació en una calle que nadie quiere?" Ese pequeño niño es sagrado y precioso para mí. ¿Quieres que...? ¿Algo específico más allá de eso te gustaría preguntar sobre él?
No, estoy preocupado por el cuarto. ¿Es eso sagrado?
Sí.
¿Es eso privado?
Sí. Por supuesto.
¿Por qué haces la pregunta, reverendo?
Bueno, porque...
Las vidas personales de las personas son su propio negocio, señor.
Bueno, el señor Perot ha tenido una gran historia de investigar a la gente y quiero saber que si es presidente de Estados Unidos, ¿llevará las cámaras a nuestros cuartos? ¿Llevará las cámaras a nuestros地下室 de iglesia donde ocurre el santuario? Y quiero saber eso.
En mi... Ahora, mantente en cuenta, eres víctima de leer los periódicos de Washington, supongo. El punto es, el punto es, en toda mi vida y en todos mis ingresos comerciales, he usado investigadores tres o cuatro veces. Todos cuando la gente fue acusada de tráfico. Es con un foco total en ese tipo de cosas. Y una vez que se involucra en la política, cualquiera se desvía, en cualquier lugar, en cualquier momento, no verifica los hechos. Y no te culpo por tener esa impresión. Pero los hechos son, no investigo la privacidad de la gente. Tengo mucho trabajo que hacer. Sabes, no ando por ahí con la camisa de Sherlock Holmes y un lápiz magnificante. Y eso es solo uno de los errores del grupo de trucos sucios republicanos. Y son buenos en eso. Es muy malo que no sean buenos en otras cosas.
Señor Perot, a veces se dice que el reverendo puede estar refiriendo al hecho de que no contratarías a personas o tendrías a personas en tu gobierno que estaban culpables de infidelidad marital. ¿Cómo lo descubrirías? ¿Y te pedirías que lo registre?
Esto es lo más sobrecortado en el mundo. Y que solíamos en reuniones de empresa... Tengo a todos estos jóvenes tigres. Estas eran personas jóvenes en los primeros días de la empresa. Eran oficiales jóvenes, muchos de ellos estaban en nuestro programa de entrenamiento, justo de vuelta de Vietnam. Algunos eran solos, algunos estaban casados. Chicos solos, siempre me estaban exigiendo casarse porque estaban atravesando chicas por la noche en lugar de trabajar. Sabes, y aprendiendo y lo que sea. Y en varias ocasiones, estaríamos riendo y bromeando y estaríamos hablando de cosas como esta. Y dije: "Mira, chicos, firmaste un contrato de vida con tu esposa. Si ella no te confía, ¿cómo puedo?" Ahora, eso se volvió todo tipo de cosas. Bueno, personalmente, siento muy fuertemente. Ahora, no ando por ahí verificando a todos esto. Pero si alguien alguna vez lo saca, siento muy fuerte cuando tomas un mandato para quedarse juntos por la vida. Sé esto, los niños necesitan a ambos. Los niños necesitan a ambos y siento que ambas partes deberían honrar ese mandato.
¿No es un poco fuera de punto, sin embargo? Parece que el ministro está preocupado con si hubiera algún test de medios aquí.
No, lo dije.
¿Que de alguna manera invadió la privacidad de la gente?
No lo hago, no lo he hecho, no lo haré. Y, sabes, siempre que haya alguien ahí con una fuente anónima, cualquiera puede decir algo. Eso es la forma americana.
Así que las vidas privadas de la gente no te preocupan.
No me dedico a las vidas privadas de la gente. Nunca lo he hecho.
Has dicho...
¡Señor gay y lesbiano, señor Perot! ¿Qué hay de gays y lesbianas, ¿eh? Nosotros somos contribuyentes también en este país, ¿sabes? Y eres un bigote por lo que has dicho hasta ahora sobre gays y lesbianas. Y América mejor sepa porque esta semana son gays y lesbianas los que te atacan. La próxima semana vas a la siguiente agrupación que está sufriendo. Tú eres un burla, señor Perot. No es nada más que una burla de tamaños.
He tenido gays y lesbianas trabajando directamente para mí y el asunto nunca se discutió. Ahora...
Pero no pueden estar en tu gabinete, no pueden luchar en las fuerzas armadas, ¿verdad? Hay muchos veteranos que son gays y lesbianas. ¿Qué hay de ellos, ¿eh? ¿Qué hay de incluir a todos en este país? Hablas de reunir a todos, pero estás eligiendo al grupo más vulnerable ahora mismo en este país. ¿Quién va a ser el próximo, señor Perot?
¿Puedes dejarlo responder la pregunta entonces? ¿Tendrías gays y lesbianas en tu gabinete, señor, o servir en el ejército?
Estaba en 2020. Barbara Walter, de inmediato, me preguntó esta pregunta. Con todo el cariño, mi mente inmediatamente fue a Clarence Thomas y Anita Hill y la brutalidad de esas audiencias. Y mi pensamiento fue, no me pasaría nada por eso. Porque si hay partidaria involucrada, como vimos en ese caso, los senadores de ambos partidos están absolutamente dispuestos a destruir a dos seres humanos decentes.
¿Quieres clarificar tu respuesta a Barbara ahora? ¿Quieres que tengas homosexuales en tu gabinete?
El punto básico que tendría que entrar es, número uno, ¿esta es la persona más calificada? ¿Fairo? Número dos, ¿esta persona está lista para soportar los rigores que podrían enfrentar en la audiencia de confirmación, ¿verdad? No me gustaría... Si alguien estaba calificado, sería una persona hermosa, ¿verdad? Y no quieres que esa persona se rompa. Creo, francamente, la doctora Hill fue rompida. Ahora, ella es una mujer fuerte y ha retrocedido, supongo. Pero Dios sabe que pagó un precio terrible por estar allí. ¿Es eso una declaración justa? Esa es mi sensibilidad en este tema. Pero volvamos a mi carrera de negocios. He tenido... Ves, el punto es, ni siquiera sabía que... Ves, no me dedico a las vidas de la gente y luego la gente me venía con el pelo todo dorado y me informaba. And then people would come to me with their brow all furrowed and report it. And I said, "Look, I don't get into people's private lives. These are brilliant people doing outstanding work. I don't want to get," you know, just, they, we promote on merit, and these are people doing a wonderful job, and they just continue. These people work directly for me.
In other words, sir, if I understand you correctly, there is no ban on gays or lesbians serving under you in government?
Except, I don't want to destroy anybody. And again, that's, that's my, I have a great love and concern for people, and I would hate to have someone coming in and just be wiped out in the hearings and just devastated. That's my concern.
We'll be right back with more questions from Mr. Perot.
These old glasses do nothing but pinch. They're a pain.
You don't have to put up with glasses that don't fit anymore.
Now LensCrafters brings you better fit for greater comfort. LensCrafters glasses fit your snug points with features like new self-adjusting snug-fit pads that flex to gently and securely hug your nose.
No more pinching. I never knew glasses could be this comfortable.
LensCrafters, better fit for greater comfort. In about an hour.
This is the time to use Ace Paint. Hey, Ace knows what it takes to make great paint, because Ace makes its own. Ace Paint, top quality in every drop, guaranteed.
Ace five-star acrylic latex house paint is just $8.97 a gallon.
Another reason Ace is the place for you.
When a muffler goes, some people look for a cheap replacement. Fact is, they can get a quality Midas muffler starting at $24.95. Fact is, a guaranteed economizer muffler starting at $24.95. Don't believe anybody ever beats Midas.
At News Channel 36, we know the environment is important to you and your family.
They have no idea how long this water's been contaminated. How could this...
Are environmentally devastated.
That's why we have San Francisco County's most experienced news team covering vital environmental issues.
The potentially toxic substances have been illegally dumped here.
Keep up with your environment on the only six o'clock newscast you can turn to seven days a week. News Channel 36 at six, where experience makes the difference.
Only two American-made luxury automobiles provide both driver and passenger-side airbags. One of them is a Lincoln. And the other one is a Lincoln. With Lincoln, it's easy to be on the same side.
Save over $5,000 when you red carpet lease a new Lincoln Continental or Town Car.
House Works is your headquarters for custom furniture at affordable prices. Come into House Works and take advantage of our two-for-one sale. This sale includes two wing chairs and your choice of fabric, both just $5.99. Need extra seating? Order two Martha Washington chairs for $4.99. You can also order a sofa and love seat for $8.99. Are you looking for bar stools? Order three and you get the fourth one free. Hurry into House Works today at 2416 Regent C. Road.
A town full of children with a terrible secret, sexual abuse by the priest. As adults, they track him down to bring him to justice.
Get the cops.
Welcome back to our town meeting with Ross Perot. We go to Ames, Iowa. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Dee Burt. A bill has been introduced that would lift the ban of homosexuals in the military. If this passes Congress, the homosexual lobby will use this new liberal policy to force churches, schools, and clubs to accept homosexuality. How would you help protect families from the breakdown of this traditional value?
You're both sides of the question.
Right. My concern is that we can spend all our time and energy passing laws, and what we really need to do is focus on various issues like this, that are very important to the individual's concern. I believe in our country right now, the highest priority is to rebuild our country. We've spent 45 years fighting the Cold War. It broke Russia. It financially bent us very badly. We need to keep our highest priority of putting America back to work. I suggest that on all of these social problems of the type we're discussing here, we can legislate forever and never really solve the problems. We need to have respect for the individual, respect for the individual's privacy, and not try to legislate every single facet of it. That would be my suggestion.
Ms. Burt, is that a satisfactory answer to you?
Well, I'm wondering how you plan to help protect private institutions from individual rights being held, upheld, and how about our traditional values?
Do you think that's a president's role, Mr. Perot?
I guess, in the real world, I think this should be handled locally on a, you know, I'm not sure that I see that we can stay preoccupied full-time with issues like this and solve the core problems that face our country. And I would suggest that we, as people, respect one another's rights, respect one another's privacy, and that way you have complete security for your family, so on and so forth. But just passing laws is just going to create a maze that everybody, you know, creates more demand for lawyers, probably, about all.
Let's go to Los Angeles.
Good evening, Mr. Perot. I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you, sir, and I thank you to Mr. Jennings. My name is Louis Burchard. I'm a motion picture and television agent in Beverly Hills, California. Mr. Perot, you were very outspoken against our commitment to Desert Shield and Desert Storm. And whereas I respect your opinion, sir, I ask you that if you become President of the United States and therefore Commander-in-Chief of our Armed Forces, what would you do if one of the Middle Eastern gangsters invaded Saudi Arabia threatening the world's oil supply? And I'd like a follow-up, sir. Thank you.
All right. Number one, if you don't like people like Saddam Hussein, don't spend 10 years creating him and spending billions of dollars of our taxpayer money. For example, when the Israelis went over and blew up his nuclear capability in 1980 or '82, Saudi Arabia offered to refinance building it, believe it or not, and Vice President George Bush deplored what the Israelis did. Then, we helped him create his bacteriological and chemical capability, believe it or not. Then, when he gassed the Kurds the same year, thousands of people were gassed, we gave him full diplomatic recognition. Now we're in May of 1990, and everybody in the United States is angry at Saddam Hussein, and President Bush is sending emissaries over saying it's all, going to be all right, and sending him more money. July 25th, 1990, he sends Ambassador Glassby in and tells, has her tell Saddam Hussein that he can take the northern part of Kuwait. And then, he took the whole thing. And the White House says, "I can't believe he ate the whole thing." You see what I mean? Now, then...
Mr. Perot, Mr. Perot, excuse me. My job is not to defend the president here, but the question was, what would you do now?
Well, number one, I wouldn't create him. You follow me? We made this sucker.
The CIA...
Now, if you don't want him, don't create him.
The CIA...
Now, number two, if you don't want to have a war in the Middle East, don't tell him he can take a part of another country. You follow me? And number three, if he takes the whole country, don't be surprised. And number four, now it's happened, all right?
So what would you do?
Now it's happened. Now it's happened. Then, slam that embargo in on that guy hard and let him twist in the wind, but put him 500,000 American forces' lives at risk. So, now, the Amir of Kuwait and his 70 wives fled like rabbits out of the country. They went to Riviera to watch it on television. The sons and daughters of working people went to the desert. I spoke to 18,000 business executives during the buildup, asked every one, "How many of you have sons and daughters in the Middle East?" I finally got up to eight out of 18,000. Now, who does the dirty, down and dirty fighting? The sons and daughters of ordinary people. Now, then, just sit there and squeeze him. You don't have to go blow him to pieces. Now, just think of the ordinary people in Iraq that got blown to pieces. They are not Saddam Hussein lovers. You see what I mean? They're just stuck there. I'm just saying, you just sit there and choke him down.
Are you worried about him?
You don't have to prove your manhood by running a television war and shoot smart bombs down air shafts and let everybody think that, you know, war has become a Super Bowl. Now, I'm sorry. Now, if and when, and I promise you one other thing, sir, if and when we ever have to do something like that, you'll never see me having honest enlisted men putting gold faucets in for the, for Amir of Kuwait into his palace while he's still waiting to come back into his country after we've liberated him. Now, something's loose here. Okay? Now, when the dust cleared, we didn't accomplish any of the, we wanted nuclear, chemical, bacteriological, we wanted Saddam Hussein. All we did is free Kuwait, give it back the Amir. All the rest are intact, and Saddam Hussein is still in power. I would say that was not an effective operation, and the thing you need to see close up is the widows, the people who were killed, the great young people walking around with parts of their body missing, so on and so forth. War is a tough, dirty, ugly thing. It's not what Cable News Network shows you on the evening news.
Mr. Burchard, do you think Mr. Perot's answered your question?
I think Mr. Perot has said a great deal. Unfortunately, he didn't answer my question.
What is your question?
I would say to you, Mr. Perot, with all due respect, I personally am very involved in helping our military. I give a large percentage of my income. I bring shows into bases. I've raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for military causes. I correspond with service people all over the world. I know what it is to lose someone in combat. I was at memorial services at the Marine Corps Air Ground Combat Center in Twenty-Nine Palms. I spoke to the widows and to the children. I was very involved in that.
And your question?
I know the horrors of war.
What is your question?
What I'm asking you, though, sir, is would you answer the question? What would you do as Commander-in-Chief of the Armed Forces if Saudi Arabia was invaded and those oil fields were in danger? Would you or would you not commit troops, sir?
I would have to look at the specific situation. You'd try to solve it in a non-military way. You'd try to solve it with embargo. You'd use the fleet. There are a lot of, keep in mind, all those countries have to sell his oil, right? It's just sand, snakes, scorpions, and oil. Now, if that oil can't move, they drive in a hurry, right? We can keep that oil from moving. I would just put in an embargo. Now, if everybody knows you're serious about this, they're not going to do it. You create an environment where, where you tell them they can do it, don't be too surprised if they do it. I did answer your question. I wouldn't tell them they could do it. That's the reason you had this problem.
Well, Mr. Perot, let me say this. I wish you all the best in running for public office, but I really don't feel you are giving an answer to my question. I respect your right not to do it, but please respect my right to ask it.
Well, wait a minute. No, I am giving you an answer.
I don't understand your answer, sir.
I don't think you want to. I'm going to knock on your door now, and I'm going to say, "Gee, they just took Saudi Arabia. Can't believe it. He's took another one." Will you send your son over to fight and die in the desert for oil? Now, you answer my question.
Sir, if my son, which I do not have, was in the military and Commander-in-Chief ordered him to go...
No, he's not. I need him, though.
I would be ashamed of him if he didn't.
No, no, he's a great young man. He's getting his master's degree in college, but I need him now. We've got to go, got to go fight for oil.
Good question. We'll be back right after this message. This ABC News National Town Meeting, "Who is Ross Perot?", will continue in a moment.
Today, Tech Tread Shoe Corporation announced a major retail expansion in 25 U.S. cities.
When I see a company that looks like a good investment, I check it out myself.
We make it easier to follow your own lead.
At Charles Schwab, I can get quotes, financial news, and when I make a trade, commission savings.
Always there to give you just the help you need.
Help yourself at Schwab today.
Wow, you looked scarier 25 years ago.
Did I?
You looked scared.
I don't know. I thought I hit it well for an innocent group.
You were innocent for the '60s.
Any regrets?
None. You?
Just one. That I waited 25 years to give you this.
The 25th Anniversary Diamond, a brilliant celebration of a loving marriage.
I got goosebumps.
Well, you've given me goosebumps for 25 years.
It's kind of unbelievable that people in America are eating 40 pounds of sugar a year. I was told about it, first of all, by someone who was a nutritionist and said, "Sure, you've got to make some changes in your diet." I have Equal, and I, actually, I feel happier because I feel okay. It tastes good to me. It's just there. I use it. I like it. You've got the sugar, you've got the pink stuff, and you've got the Equal.
Equal has the great taste of Nutrasweet and no saccharin.
I choose Equal.
Women are tired of being told what to do.
You see them more and more in soap operas and in real life, older women with younger men. On the next Entertainment Tonight, see why this love relationship is bridging the generation gap.
The younger men and older women, they have a lot in common.
Plus Gina Davis. In her new film, she's playing hardball and has got the bruises to prove it.
Yeah, we were always comparing battle scars.
It's all on the next Entertainment Tonight. Tuesday evening at 5:30 on News Channel 36.
This Friday and Saturday, come and celebrate the Fourth of July at Coliver Furniture. For two days only, you'll find explosive savings on a two-piece sofa and chair for only $3.95. Lane sectionals for $9.95. Lane recliners, just $2.27. Colivers has trailer luggage and merchandise to meet demand. And don't forget about silly betting at the guaranteed lowest prices in the state. If you really want to save, drive to the country where they really know how to celebrate. Coliver Furniture, poplar plain.
Pro-choice. On the next Good Morning America, we will see how both sides see the Supreme Court's abortion decision. Then breakfast aboard the space shuttle on the next Good Morning America.
Who is Ross Perot? This ABC News National Town Meeting continues, once again from Studio One in New York. Peter Jennings.
Mr. Perot, we'll put on videotape and sell for $19.95 what's been going on during the commercial.
There we go.
But for now, let's go to Ypsilanti, Michigan. Go ahead, please.
My name is Clementine Chisholm Barfield. I am president of Save Our Sons and Daughters, So Sad, an organization that I started after my two teenage sons were shot. One of them critically, one fatally. Mr. Perot, what do you propose to do about the children? About the violence that's engulfing their lives, about the drugs, about the guns? And what do you plan to do to ensure that they have a sense of security and a sense of future in this country?
I think you're certainly down to a core problem now. Our country cannot be great unless we have a strong moral, ethical base. We have to care and share and help one another and do all of those things that every religion teaches. Doesn't matter. That's those, that's all common ground, I think, in every religion. Or just forget religion if you want to and talk about character. We need to have people of character who have these same beliefs. Then society will work. Society won't work if we act the way we do now. Now, let's go to the really disadvantaged children, who in many cases do not have a strong family unit. They need special help. I've said again and again in my life, if I could wish for one thing for this country, it would be a strong family unit in every home, where each little child has two parents that adore and help mold and shape that little piece of clay to reach his or her full potential. We have many places in our country where that does not exist. I've been working on this since 1969. I have seen things that work miracles. These are tiny little schools in the neighborhood, where these little children start at a very early age. The one I'm working with now, we're going to go back to the mother while she's still pregnant, have our first contact with her when she's pregnant. Make sure she has proper nutrition, proper birth, the child has proper nutrition. Then, at a very early age, make sure that child gets everything that the child gets in a good, strong home. They're loved, they're cared for, they're nurtured, they're made to feel special. A child learns to think well or poorly of himself at a very early age. A child learns how to learn at a very early age. These little children, in many cases, get bussed across town in the first grade and have none of that buildup or that support, and school is an alien experience for them. We've got to, and we can, in the school I'm talking about here, you start when you're three now, you stay till you're nine. When you finish the third grade, you go to the public school, and listen to this, 90% of these little children are on the honor roll when they go to the public schools. They will go to college. They will be successful in life. It's a generational change, but you have to start when they're very, very young.
Let's go to Dallas, Texas, please.
I'm Hannah Klein, and I've been active on the Dallas Independent School District's Religious Community Task Force. I would be interested in hearing your position on the role of religion in the public schools, and more specifically, on issues such as prayer in the public schools, holiday celebrations in the public schools, and federal aid going to parochial schools.
Well, I would like to have a clear green light to teach character in the public schools. To teach character. Now, I'm trying to stay away from all the religious symbolism, but it's basically, if we could get everybody in the same room, no matter what their religion, we would agree on common things about being kind to one another, treating one another with dignity and respect, loving one another, not having differences by race, creed, so on and so forth. If you call it ethics, call it what you will, so that you can get it through the filters. But I guess the best way I can tell you about how I feel about this is, right outside my office, is the Akin Bible in a glass briefcase, in a glass display case. That's the only Bible ever authorized by the Congress of the United States. It was authorized during the revolution. It was the first Bible printed in English in the United States. Prior to the revolution, they had to be shipped in, you had to pay a tariff from Great Britain. This was done when our country had nothing, so that children could be in the public schools, and the members of that Congress became the framers of the Constitution. So it's an indication of the importance they placed on strong moral and ethical standards. Very important. What was your other question?
The role that religion itself would play in the public schools, and I guess I'm thinking denominational religion.
If we get to denominational religion in the public schools, we will hit a quagmire that will take us 10 years to get out the other side. I would like to be able to teach moral and ethics and, in effect, get the same thing done. Prayer in the public schools, I grew up, we couldn't go to school without having a prayer every morning, but if it's going to disrupt the school system, and we're gonna spend $80 million on court cases and lawyers, I would say, and it's gonna upset everybody, let's do it at home, and then when you get to school, let's stick with the strong ethical standards and moral standards that create a great society.
Let's go to Little Rock, Arkansas.
Mr. Perot, I'm Don Walters. Arkansas is a state that struggles with a lot of poverty, and one of the reasons we have so much poverty is we rank number one or two in children having children. And what I mean is, children ages 10 to 19 are having babies, and that creates all kinds of poverty issues long-term. Our health department has developed programs that increase sex education in the schools, makes contraceptions available, and establishes school-based clinics. But we have strong forces that fight against that, saying we're creating promiscuity, when the facts show that when we do these programs, the pregnancy rate goes down. If you are president, what would you do about teenage pregnancy? And would you implement programs if there was strong public resistance and criticism?
Well, again, there's nothing more precious than a new human life. And the saddest thing in the world is to create one if you don't want it. And these little children having babies is the saddest commentary of all, because they're not mature enough to be mothers and fathers. We're back to the family unit. Nothing can replace it. If these little children had a strong home base, this wouldn't be happening. I don't care how poor they are. It's the absence of... I will be spending a great deal of time talking about the importance of the mother and father, talking about the importance of parental supervision, talking about having the parents take responsibility for their children again, which has been abandoned in a lot of parts of our society. Then going on to the next step, we need to take careful, intelligent steps to try to prevent these little children from reproducing. So I don't have any problem with, you know, properly training them, so that they don't make mistakes that damage their lives and create a new life that has no love in it.
It is not wholly related to birth control, of course, sir, but there's a debate in many parts of the country about condom distribution to protect young people against AIDS, which is also a measure of birth control. Are you opposed to this at all?
No, again, I'm completely relaxed on whatever we need to do. In terms of the things our country must face, and the president needs to spend his time on, I see these as state and local issues. The president needs to put this country back to work. The president needs to have a policy to re-industrialize the country. See, we're spending a billion, a trillion $400,000 a year, and just taking in about a trillion. And we're $4 trillion in debt. And in business terms, that's a recipe for disaster. The only way out of the hole that we're in, in the corner that we're in, is a growing, expanding job base. Now, everybody in this country would like to have a growing, expanding job base. I believe that since we've been preoccupied with the Cold War for 45 years, and now it's over, we ought to come home, focus on rebuilding our cities, focus on rebuilding our infrastructure, focus on rebuilding the job base, focus on re-industrializing America. And I would suggest the American people, the highest priorities must go there, so that we have the money to pay for all of these good social programs that we're talking about here tonight.
Let's go to Miami.
Good evening. Robert Anderson, police officer. Mr. Perot, under the existing criminal justice system, felon sentenced to death, spend a minimum of 10 years and millions of dollars in tax-paying revenue for appeals. Number one, as an individual, do you believe in a death penalty? And number two, what reforms, as president, would you support to reduce these costly and lengthy appeals?
Well, I would go... Let me go directly to your answer. All of us hate to think that we have to execute a person. On the other hand, when you've got drive-by shootings on strangers and all the things that you live with day in and day out, and you've got people that are drunk and high and out of control, go in and blow away the guys in a 7-Eleven store trying to make a living to get $40 out of the cash register, somehow you've gotta get their attention, right? Now, the point is, it appears that only that kind of penalty, that if you're going to take a life, you may lose your life, will capture their attention. Then we put them in Texas in an $85,000 prison cell. You know, a lot of good law-abiding people would like to have an $85,000 house, right? Then, we spend more every year holding them in prison than it would cost to send them to Harvard. We've got a penal system that's just really strange. Just think, that you could send that person to Harvard University for less than it costs to keep them in jail. Now, then finally, your point is, millions of dollars of taxpayers' money, because these are public defenders, many, many years of delays and what have you, a whole frame of the Constitution, framers intended for swift, sure justice. I'm in favor of careful, deliberate, but, you know, fairly swift justice, because otherwise, the people who do play by the rules, the people who didn't kill anybody, the people who are out there working hard and paying taxes, bear all of the expense.
The gentleman raises, or at least I hear, I think, sir, a fairly simple answer to what is a fairly complex problem, which raises, again, this question of getting the guns out of the hands of criminals. How would you do it?
Now, he's asking about the death penalty, right?
I know, yes. You answered that. You also talked about drive-by shootings and 7-Elevens, which you'd...
Well, our problem here is that the people who use guns... You can't limit yourself to guns. You can kill a person with a bottle. You can kill a person with a knife, for sure. Now, we're gonna... So if I said, okay, then we can't have kitchen knives anymore, right? Well, everybody's saying, oh, that's squirrely. Now, the point is, I think we're back to the point he was making. Drunk, high, and crazy, this guy showing up to 7-Eleven that's willing to kill everybody in the store for $30, needs to understand that there may not be any place to run, any place to hide, and that sort of clears his head about being willing to take that risk. You can have all kinds of procedural rules, where people who have ever been convicted of anything can never have a gun, so on and so forth. The facts are, if we outlaw guns in this country, there are so many guns in this country, it will take years to get them all turned in. All the honest people will turn in their guns on day one. All the dishonest people will have the world's biggest black market in guns at four and five times the price, and every third-world country in the world will be shipping them in here if we ever run dry. So getting rid of guns won't be that pretty. We've got to go back to a society that has a strong moral, ethical base. See, we try to fix things at the wrong end.
What do you mean it won't be that...
Let's assume I've got a bad tire.
What do you mean it won't be that pretty?
Stay with me. Let's assume, you know, you've got a bad tire, just patching it and patching it and patching it. That's what we tend to do. Our problem is down here. When we were children, it was unthinkable that you'd carry a gun to school. Now we have 135,000 children carrying guns to school.
But again, Mr. Perot, you're defining the problem. What's the solution?
A strong moral, ethical base is the ultimate solution. A strong moral, ethical base is the solution. Now, beyond that, we can outlaw guns, and we will still have guns in the hands of the bad people. None of the good people will have them. We can have guns registered, and we can have a one-week delay. We can go through all of these steps, but until we have a societal change, the bad guys will still be blowing people up with guns. That's my strong belief. That goes back to the communities, the churches, the people, the things little children are taught at home, the things that are reinforced in school, reinforced in church, reinforced in scouting. This is the way you build a strong moral and ethical base.
So in the short run, there is no prospect in your mind of ending the violence?
Oh, we can pass all the laws in the world.
But you're not...
No, you know, I'm happy to consider anything the American people want, but I don't like to deal in flim-flam. Let's go down to what will really work. And the bad guys, particularly the big-time drug dealers, they can have them flown in from all over the world, Federal Express. Not... See, because it doesn't matter, say, an Uzi costs $25,000 to those guys. Have each part flown in in a small envelope and assembled when he gets here.
Would you be for amending the Constitution to give the police greater latitude and maybe perhaps less for defendants?
No.
Thank you, sir. We'll be right back.
This National Town Meeting, an ABC News special, will continue in a moment. We built the all-new 1992 Toyota Camry with many exotic materials, including the one you see here, the road. You see, by strategically placing thin insulating sheets made from lightweight asphalt in the new Camry, we were able to help keep something else out: noise. The all-new 1992 Toyota Camry, we just couldn't leave well enough alone.
Hi, this is 9489, I'm from San Antonio. Thank you, one minute. Do you need a water? Do you need a drink?
Of all the things around your house that need batteries, there's one thing that needs a good, fresh battery most of all. See your all-state agent for a free home fire safety brochure. And please, check the battery in your smoke detector often.
Johnny Carson may be gone.
This is the moment you've been waiting for.
But late-night comedy lives on. Ta-da! It's the News Channel 36 Late Night Comedy Three Pack.
Shut up and dip me.
Expand your horizons with a little glamour.
Sure. Blame the guy in the dress.
A little philosophy.
Normal people do not have purple hair.
And a touch of humility.
I'm queen of the jungle.
Beginning at midnight, Kate and Ally, Family Ties and Alf, the Late Night Comedy Three Pack on News Channel 36.
This year, more than 40,000 Americans are expected to become infected with HIV. Fortunately, many people have found a way to respond.
I've got a friend that's got AIDS.
What? The shooting up?
You think that's the only way people get AIDS?
Educating themselves.
Someone is infected with HIV without a blood test.
Their employees.
The issue here is education.
Their congregations and friends.
Enlightening sermon.
We need to talk to our...
Their community.
This says that AIDS is growing faster in small towns.
Especially their families.
You and Nelson, you think you're invincible. No one is.
Education does make a difference.
My name is Eileen, and last year I found out that I have HIV.
If we're going to prevent the spread of HIV, each and every one of us must do our part. Find out how you can help prevent HIV.
Welcome back to our Town Meeting with Ross Perot. We're gonna go to Washington, D.C. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mr. Perot. My name is Gino Gubey. I'm a student at Gallaudet University here in Washington, D.C. My major concern, as with other college students, is finding a job after graduation. The employment outlook is very difficult at this time, especially being deaf, that makes it more difficult. How would you encourage American businesses to hire disabled people? There's 47 million of them out there, to hire them into the business. How would you push them to hire qualified people with disabilities like myself?
I think, again, what is your skill? What is your major?
My major is government, sir.
Gee, you're in the right place.
But the wrong year.
Yeah. See, interesting enough, there are all sorts of jobs where your wonderful mind is the key. And if I were you, I would look in those particular areas. Now, I guess one of my concerns, for example, in the computer field, we've had any number of people like you who just did brilliantly, because they just weren't limited in any way in terms of their ability to compete. And I would look in areas like that, and each person, depending upon his disability, needs to find an area where he or she can compete head-on and not be at a disadvantage because of that particular disability. So you're very fortunate in that you have, I'm sure, a fine mind, a lot of creativity and initiative, and you do what I did when I started to look for a job. Just go out and interview. I interviewed with a lot of companies, finally found the right one.
And the rest is history.
That's it. No, I don't think, in the world of technology, I can assure you that your disability will not be a hindrance if you have the skills.
We go to a question here in New York City. Yes, ma'am, up here.
Yes, Mr. Perot, my name is Linda Pierce. As a single parent, I pay 27% of my income in taxes. When you add on state and local tax, it comes to 1/3, 1/3 of my income. I think you said that you would plan to raise taxes only in an emergency. People like me would like to know how you would define an emergency. Can you give me two examples?
Well, I'll give you the easy one. If we went to war, no matter how short the war might be, I would suggest that we have a surtax as a matter of principle, just to clear our heads, that we're sending other people, sons and daughters, off to fight and die, and then this causes everybody in America to do a double blink and say, wait a minute, is this something we really ought to do? Then, of course, say, gee, I don't want to... And not to you, of course, but to some able-bodied man that says, gee, I don't want to do this. Well, he can always go to war, because we won't put that surtax on the folks on the battlefield. But it's easy for me to sit back here and send someone else off to war. I need to put a little skin in the game. That's one example. A more practical example is, let's assume that we're just unable to pay our bills, unable to meet our obligations, we have to raise our taxes. That's it. We have to pay our bills as a country. And we've been living in a fantasy land where we run up bills and don't pay them.
So you think a tax increase is inevitable?
No, I don't think it's inevitable at all. Increase in taxes is like having a cocaine addict that's in a detox center and just giving him a little every day so he feels better. You follow me? Deficit spending is addictive. We've got to stop this practice as a country. No, it's not inevitable, not at all. We've got to put some discipline in the system, as opposed to just spending our children's money, spending the Social Security trust fund money. See, nothing is more rotten than that, and we're doing that right now, and we're pretending we're not.
You appear to say two things, sir. You say, no new taxes. You also say, we must raise taxes to pay our bills. Which is it?
I'm saying that in an emergency, if we have to raise taxes to keep our country solvent, then you would have to raise taxes. But if there is such an emergency, it's because we created it as a people by being unwilling to face our obligations. Right now, we want everything, but we don't want to pay for it. Well, we've gone through $4 trillion of our children's money there, and we're going to have to say, we're gonna have to settle down here, folks, and have to cut out a lot of this wasteful spending. We're gonna have to balance the budget, or we have to pay our bills. Now, I think confronted with those two options, the American people get much more realistic.
How do you feel about sin taxes, by the way, things cigarettes, alcohol? And what about a gas tax?
Well, there are all kinds... You know, that's all part of, it's kind of part of the blend. You know, it's kind of like making fruit salad. You're gonna have a little bit of all that in any tax program.
But would you be worried...
But I don't take them on it. No, no. Here's what I propose. The present tax system we have is obsolete. It's, again, it's like an inner tube with a thousand patches. I propose that we start with a blank sheet of paper, get a consensus with the American people, that number one, we gotta pay our bills, number two, one, it's gotta be fair. Our present system is not fair. This lady that was just talking here, see, she's under tremendous pressure as a single parent. It's not fair. It ought to be paperless for most of the American people, and then finally, you have to raise revenues to run the country. And work together, build a consensus, explain it in great detail to the American people, and go to a new fair tax system.
Wouldn't that be a flat tax?
No, I wish I could just say it's a flat tax, it's a this, or that, or the other. The facts are, see, to get a system that will work for all of us and get a consensus among all of us that that is the right system, I can't soundbite it. We'll have to work, it'll be, I think in a six-month period, we could build a consensus that this is what we ought to do. The beauty of a new tax system, it's all numbers. See, it's not, let's say, a new welfare system, a new healthcare system, these are far more complex to engineer. A new tax system is an orderly, rational process, but you must have a consensus that it's fair.
How do you plan to gauge that consensus?
By explaining it in detail to the American people, which we never do. For example, you remember when we had the Tax and Budget Summit in 1991? And if we agreed to that tax increase, we were gonna get rid of the deficit? And the first year, we were off by $255 billion in the wrong direction, and nobody ever told us, nobody ever told us, that we increased spending that same year $1.83 for every new dollar of taxes we took in. It was the biggest shell game in the world. We're gonna cut that out. We're gonna level with you, explain it to you, get a consensus that this is fair, this is right, this is what we ought to do. Then Congress will pass the laws, sign them into law, go on to the next problem.
And on to the next question. Let's go to Boston.
But keep you involved is the key.
Let's go to Boston, Massachusetts.
I'm Iris Stoll.
I'm Ira Stoll. Mr. Perot, you said that you did not prohibit your employees from wearing beards when you were head of EDS. But in fact, in 1983, a federal judge found that you dismissed an employee from EDS solely for the fact that he refused to shave his beard. This orthodox Jewish employee sued and was rehired. In fact, through 1986, EDS employees were prohibited from wearing tassled loafers or striped shirts. How do these facts jar with your previous statements? And what do they say about your tolerance for people who look, think, and act differently from you?
All right. First off, I have no knowledge of the case you mentioned. At that time, the president of EDS was a Jew. He made those decisions, if those decisions were in fact made. We have people in EDS, we had when I left, we have people in my companies now that have beards. We have, back in the early days of EDS, let's go back in the '60s now, when we were nothing and we had to compete with IBM all day, every day, we did ask our people to dress professionally. Now, and I'm talking about now, wearing a nice suit, so on and so forth. We were in an advanced technology business. We were dealing with a company whose people presented themselves very professionally, and we needed to do the same thing. And that was good business, and everybody understood it. And that's all it was. It was just to make sure, we were at a huge disadvantage because we were small. We had to compete with a giant. Those people competed with the giants and won again and again and again and again. Most of the time, you were selling to customers who didn't understand computers but were real or imagined experts on people. So it was important, not only that we knew what we were doing, but that we looked like we knew what we were doing.
But this wasn't the '60s.
I'm talking about the dress, you're talking about the dress code now. The man you're talking about in '83, I tell, I promise you this, I will go home, see, I don't have access to EDS's records. I will ask Mort Meyerson, who was president of EDS in 1983. I never heard of this case. This is a new thing in my life. I will ask Mort tomorrow what he knows about it, the next time anyone asks me. But isn't it interesting that the president of the company was a Jew? Right?
Tonight is not the first time you've heard of it.
No, no, it's, but I've never paid any atten, you know, I, there's so many stray bullets flying around. The point is, I've never asked Mort. Here's, I will ask Mort. But in terms of your inference of discrimination, please don't lose sight of the fact that the great builder of EDS happened to be a Jew, Mort Meyerson.
Are you satisfied with the answer?
Well, this, you talked about the dress in the '60s. This is the '80s, and you weren't allowing employees to wear tassled loafers or striped shirts. What does this say about tolerance?
I think we did allow them. Again, I'll check tomorrow and, and see if what Mort's policies were. He made these policies during this whole period.
Okay.
People were, let me say this, people were there with, other than white shirts, it wasn't all of that rigid. Now, one of my favorite stories, I was having lunch one day down the EDS cafeteria with a reporter. One guy came by with a beard, and I thought the reporter was going to faint. Young lady came by wearing slacks, and she almost fell, the reporter fell out of her chair, and she just couldn't get over the fact that, you know, the myths weren't true.
We'll be right back after this message.
We built the Maytag refrigerator with shelves, bins, and drawers that will adjust to meet your changing needs in years to come, and solid heavy-duty parts to last for years to come.
Yo, mom!
We can only guess what the world will be like in years to come, but it's nice to know that whatever the future holds, your Maytag will too. Buy one now and get the best warranty in the business.
Here goes my future.
Finally, a chance to get away.
Moments like this call for gold MasterCard.
We could find a romantic hotel.
In Paris.
It has the added credit you've earned.
We could sneak off to the beach.
Yeah, Maui.
Plus, no card is accepted in more places, at home and abroad.
Or we could take a trip we'll all remember.
Wow!
Gold MasterCard, the best gold card to master the moment.
The diamond is a symbol of enduring quality. The same can be said for the Mitsubishi Diamante, an exquisite blend of luxury and performance. And for those who aspire to these special qualities, Mitsubishi offers these special leasing terms: just $299 a month for 36 months with no down payment. The Diamante lease from Mitsubishi, the word is getting around.
There is a mighty spirit shining out.
In Salisbury, Maryland, the hungry are being fed. In Windfalls, Indiana, a man who learned to read at 47 is making sure others learn earlier. In Hope, New Mexico, people turned an abandoned school into a thriving community center. In Boston, Massachusetts, neighbors set up a crime hotline that's making their streets safer. From Seattle to Galveston, from Buffalo to Fargo, every day, someone in America is doing something to light up another life. But there is so much more to do. The light to do it is within us all. We only need to share it. Contact the Points of Light Foundation. Do something good. Feel something real.
This ABC News National Town Meeting, Who Is Ross Perot, continues. Once again, Peter Jennings.
Mr. Perot is, is just taking a glance here at a court document from, I think, 1983 in which EDS was forced to reinstate an employee because he had been dismissed purely because he wore a beard, and he wore it, he said, for religious reasons because he was Jewish. You made not much, but certainly something of the fact that EDS was run by Mort Meyerson, who was Jewish. You belong to a country club that excluded Jews, and when you decided--
No, it didn't.
It didn't?
Didn't, but it didn't have any. No, I just make that as an interesting point. No, interesting enough, when I got into it, they didn't exclude anybody, but in fact, they didn't have anybody.
Well, then why did you resign from the country club?
I did is because I was getting into political life, and it didn't make, see, the point is, I don't play golf, I don't go to country clubs, I don't care about the thing. When my children were small, we joined because it was a nice place for them to go and swim. My children are grown. I may go into those places once a year, maybe. And it came up, I hadn't even thought about it. I thought about it, I resigned.
You, you'd never thought about it before you decided--
Oh, no. My, in, in terms of all my minority friends in Dallas, it was nothing. Now, see, that was, my world was my people, my friends in Dallas. And my friends around the country, it was a zero. If it was a concern to anybody, I didn't want it to be an issue.
But just so I understand perfectly, you never were aware that the country club prior to that time had excluded any minorities?
I never got into, in fact, since I never spent any time there. You know, who's there, who's not there, so on and so forth. And when it came up, I looked into it, and I resigned, just because I figured, you know, it was nothing, well, first off, I don't have to pay dues anymore, so it's not bad there.
Let's go to Seattle, Washington. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Louise Calhousis. I wonder how you feel about limiting welfare payments to mothers after their first child, and perhaps using that money to further their education or train them for a job so they don't all have to be on welfare, including children three and four and five different ones?
Yeah, I think it's important to try to get everybody who can work to work and to change, this is, you know, a term you hear a lot, change it to a workfare program. Because if you leave people on welfare, one of the things that happens is they completely lose their self-esteem, they completely lose their sense of, of being a productive, self-sufficient person, and that really has an adverse impact on their life. So it's good for the person, it's good for the country, and we need to have very good, sound programs to make, help these people become productive citizens. Now, that means a growing, expanding job base again, so that once they're trained, there's work for them to do, right? Just training them for a job that doesn't exist won't solve anything. We just wasted money. We've got to pay and train them for a job that exists and get them productive.
I think in part the question implies, though, that you might punish welfare mothers. Is that correct, ma'am?
No, I was just concerned about having so many children on welfare. They get, in Wisconsin, they had, had put this into practice. And after their first child, they do not get any more welfare payments, and then the mother can get trained and perhaps get a job and not have all these children and get more money every month after month.
Well, no, I'm, I would be very much in favor of trying to help the people get productive. I thought that was your question.
Have five children.
What's that?
They are being productive when they have four and five children.
Well, no, I mean productive at work.
On to Los Angeles, California.
Hi, Mr. Perot. My name is Winnie Jackson, and I stand before you today, first of all, I understand what you're saying in trying to bring it to the American public. But I want to tell you, I will be praying for you because you have a job ahead of you. If you think that our Congress and our Senate is going to let you put everything before us, I think you have, you're in for a shock. Now, my question, my question is concerning our children. They have lost the American dream. We have children in this country, in poor communities, in middle-class, poor communities, more homeless children than I have ever seen in my life, eating out of garbage cans, needing shoes, needing clothing, needing medical help, jobs, a better education, while this country sends, it sends billions of dollars out of this country to help other children and other nations, even teams of doctors, while we at home suffer right here. We've just come out of a riot, and we're going to go back because these children will not be passive, and they will not take it. I've heard a lot of questions today. I've heard a lot of things from various candidates. I don't hear anyone addressing the priorities of our children, where they put them in their administration, where they put these needs.
Ms. Jackson, what is your question to Mr. Perot?
You will have a Secretary of Education.
Ms. Jackson.
You will redo your cabinet.
Ms. Jackson.
Where are our children and their needs, their human needs in your priorities? And will you talk either through the electronic media in creating some avenues so that our children have shoes on their feet, a coat on their back, food in their stomach, while people, other restaurants throw it away, they can be given it to somebody to eat, a means of having an education, and some kind of way to be trained so that they can have a job? That's what I want to know. I, I want to know about our children. I don't understand this.
Well, the core of why I'm willing to do this is for the children and for the next generation, and to rebuild the American dream and keep it alive. Everything you've said goes right to my heart. The children will carry the highest priority, and everybody in this country is willing to work and sacrifice for our children. So we're, as I go around the country and talk to people, there's a very strong consensus that we should do that. You hit on a very interesting point. One of our problems in our country, we're still organized to fight the Cold War. We need to reorganize our government to come home and rebuild our country. So that would take the highest priority with me. See, the Cold War is over, and yet if you look at structurally, our government is still organized for our primary emphasis to be on international issues and the Cold War. We need to reorganize it to rebuild America. We can't rebuild America without giving the primary attention to our children. And these, they, we've got to get very specific. See, one program won't work in every place. The program, we can put together a program for South Los Angeles, and we need to do it, and we need to do it fast, and we need to put it in place. There are many, many good ideas from the leaders in South Los Angeles, but ideas in the idea phase don't benefit the children. We've got to move to execution quickly. We have the talent in our country to do that. We've got an enormous amount of young talent coming out of the armed forces. Many of these are minorities, highly trained, know how to get things done, know how to produce results. Got an enormous amount of talent coming out of our colleges and universities this year in the minority groups. Sadly enough, many of them don't have jobs. It's an opportunity to put them to work right there, to help redo all these things. In terms of medical care in the minority, in the disadvantaged communities, we could move in a matter of weeks with all the mobile military units we have in this country to bring a tremendous amount of practical medical attention, including vaccinations, inoculations, so on and so forth, that would help stabilize conditions in the community. Terms of the distribution of food, the thing you mentioned, that food's being thrown away in, in some places, there's nothing to eat in other places. There are all kinds of systems in place across the country that we can replicate and optimize and bring into these areas. And we need to do it, but as you well know, our primary emphasis seems to be on international affairs, not on taking care of our children. If the American people send me there, a very, very, very high priority will be to take care of those children you're so concerned about. They are our future.
We'll be right back after this message.
From ABC News, Who Is Ross Perot? This National Town Meeting brought to you by AT&amp;T.
In our universe, there was always the unknown, the unpredictable. All we can do is prepare for it.
AT&amp;T is now installing FastStar. It can detect a cable cut instantly, so 800 calls can get back in, in minutes instead of hours.
We can send flowers for any occasion, anywhere, but only if our 800 service is up and running. Our 800 service isn't just a phone line, it's a lifeline.
I miss you.
AT&amp;T has the most reliable 800 service, period.
This vehicle has a number of features that make it an extremely secure place to put So does this one. The Lexus LS400, with the highest retained value in its class, it's like money in the bank.
Hey, Sleeping Beauty, wake up!
Is Prince Charming coming?
No, but the new boss may be.
Better revive with Viverine.
Viverine?
It wakes me up, and it's safe as coffee.
Great proposal, spacey, really alert.
Revive with Viverine.
This is the time to use Ace Paint. Hey, Ace knows what it takes to make great paint, because Ace makes its own. Ace Paint, top quality in every drop, guaranteed.
Ace five-star acrylic latex house paint is just $8.97 a gallon.
Another reason Ace is the place for you.
Whether you're a sports fan or not, make an effort to welcome a very special group of visitors to our city. Nearly 1,000 sports information directors from colleges and universities all across America will be in Lexington June 28 through July 2.
Hey, Lexington, we're having company, companies coming to see us.
Their slogan may be, "We deliver."
I worked real hard, real, real hard.
But when this devoted employee foiled an attempted robbery, the pizza parlor delivered his pink slip.
The police told me that night I was a hero, and I had done everything perfect.
Now, a current affair tells you why the doughboy who saved the day had a pizza shop stop his pay.
Thought I was a hero.
The Domino Theory.
Tuesday night at 7 on News Channel 36.
We are coming to the end of what has been a fairly long evening, in terms of minutes, anyway, with Ross Perot. We're going to run over just a little bit now, go to Miami. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Pedro Zamora. I'm 20 years old, and I'm a person living with AIDS. I was infected as a teenager and in high school. I feel that Mr. Perot dodged the question completely about condom distributions in the schools, so I would like a clear answer whether you agree with condom distributions in schools or not, and why or why not?
I couldn't understand. If I agree with what--
Mr. Zamora said he didn't agree, sir, with your answer about condom distribution or the availability of condoms in the schools, and he wanted you to clarify that.
I, I see that as a state and local issue. I don't have any, you know, if, if that makes sense, and anything we can do to prevent the spread of AIDS, I don't understand, is, I aim for preventing the spread of AIDS and for creation of unwanted babies, and good, high-quality sex education and distribution of condoms and things like that in the world we live in today is something that probably, you know, that the schools need to do. I don't, what is it you want me to say?
There's been a lot of controversy, Mr. Perot, about, about keeping track of people with, who are HIV-positive. Do you believe in something like a national registry where people with, who are HIV-positive should be registered for--